And that's about it.
I'd move adoption of the agenda as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And you opposed say no. That motion carries. For our dates to remember, today is the marching band indoor expo. That'll be starting at seven o'clock here. And so we do intend to try and be done well in advance so we can attend for those who want to attend that today. November 2nd is early release. November 7th and 8th is second and third grade parent teacher conferences from 3:30 to 6:45. November 8th and 14th are middle school parent teacher conferences from 5:30 to 8:45. November 11th is the Veterans Day holiday. There's no school. November 14th is our regular Board of Education meeting at 5:30 PM here in the Instructional Planning Center in the arena. November 15th and 17th is fourth and fifth grade parent teacher conferences from 3:30 to 6:45. November 21st, 22nd is kindergarten or K-1 parent teacher conferences from 3:30 to 6:45. November 23rd is early release. November 24th and 25th is Thanksgiving vacation. There's no school those days. And then November 28th is our second board meeting in November at 5:30 PM. Remaining dates to remember are on the agenda. Next item is community input. For items not on the agenda, is anybody present for community input? Seeing no one coming forward, we'll move on to conflict disclosures and consideration of waivers. We have four. The school board is to review these disclosures and determine if the transactions or the terms of the contracts are fair, reasonable, and not contrary to the public interest. The first is submitted by John Helpcat. It's number 2017 dash 40.
Mr. Chairman, I disclose that I'm a member of the local Sertoma Club, of which I sit on the Board of Directors. The Special Services Department of the Huron School District is a line item, budget item, for our club as speech and hearing is the Sertoma National Mission. So I am disclosing that membership and that board position while serving as a school board member.
I would make a motion to approve the waiver and state that it is fair, reasonable, and not contrary to the public interest.
Second.
I think that's what all needs to be in there. There's a motion and a second to approve that. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. We do it to do roll call on these? Oh, because Mr. Helpcat cannot vote on his own waiver. That is correct, so we'll have to do this one by roll call. I'll ask the business manager to call the roll.
Hader.
Aye.
Van Burcom.
Aye.
And Wheeler.
Aye.
The vote is three zero and Helpcat will be reflected in the record that he did not participate.
Okay. Thank you. We'll now move on to the next, which is from board member Garrett Bishop, but he's not present at this point. He informed us ahead of time he's not going to be able to make it to this meeting. Would you like it? Do you want to do this or defer until next time?
If it's all right, if it's a similar pattern, or would you like it? Because I'll read it if it's all right to move forward with it.
I think we can before.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, the board member Bishop is declaring that he serves on the Huron Community Foundation Board and that the Huron School District receives grants from that board in the past and may continue to do so, and that that board also has fundraisers which help fund their grants. As a board member, they vote on how the grants are distributed. He has no contract with the board. He has no consideration of benefits and he's on the first of a three-year term and the school district only benefits from the grants received from HCF.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the waiver and I believe that the terms of the contract are fair, reasonable, and not contrary to a public interest such that a waiver is reasonable. I'd second that.
There's a motion to approve this waiver. I would just note for the benefit of the public, as we have in the past, these types of waivers where employees or board members are disclosing participation in other boards or organizations is out of an abundance of caution. You know, no board member is receiving, there's no contract in which tax dollars are being spent. There's mainly just to make sure we are over complying with disclosure, so. Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, well, we'll do, well, I guess he's not here. Can we do it just by voice votes?
I'm ready either way.
Well, let's just be safe. We'll do it by roll call again.
Okay. Hader.
Aye.
Van Burcom.
Aye.
Helpcat.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye.
Four zero. Well, members present.
Okay. And then the next one, we have two submitted by Lori Wielander, numbers 2017, 44, and 45, in which.
She's present.
She is present. I guess she can talk about them if she wants to, but she is disclosing her service on the Heartland Hands Birth to Three Executive Board and on the South Dakota Case Executive Board where she serves as treasurer.
Right, and I directed her to the podium in case she had questions.
What is South Dakota Case?
South Dakota Case is the Council of Administrators of Special Education, and I am the treasurer of that executive board.
Okay. Do we enter into any contracts with either of these organizations?
No. Not that I'm aware of.
Those are on parallel with me serving on the superintendent's executive board.
Okay, any further questions or action?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve these two waivers and state that the terms are fair, reasonable, and not contrary to the public interest.
You gotta do a lot of time. Do a lot of time, yeah. Okay, we'll do.
All right, we'll do the, I'll make a motion to do the first one then. Same terms.
Second to first.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the first one, number 2017 dash 44. We'll do a roll call on this one also. Or not.
We have administrators.
Oh, okay. Well, then we'll just do a voice vote, I guess. Okay. Since none of us are involved personally on this, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed say no. That motion carries. And then the next one is 2017 dash 45. This is the one regarding South Dakota Case. Questions or action?
I'd also make a motion to approve Mrs. Wielander's waiver request, 2017 dash 45, and declare that the terms of the contract are fair, reasonable, and not contrary to the public interest.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve this waiver. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed say no. That motion carries. Thank you all very much for that. We'll now move on to our consent agenda. The superintendent of schools recommends approval of the following. First, approval of new hires. We have Miranda Matkey as a TAP classroom leader and site coordinator substitute. Tricia Johns as a substitute teacher. We have four contracts for board approval. Each one of these is for revision to the current contract. They are not new employees of the district. They are for Amy Lindquist, Terry Schleter, Carrie Yulberg, and Marietta Riedel. We have a resignation from Betty Sparks from the Food Service Satellite. We have three intends to apply for grant funding, two from the student council, one of which is for a grant from Northwestern Energy for $1,000 to help fund student council participation in the state student council convention in Rapid City. The second is for a $450 ShopCo Foundation grant to help fund the high school trick-or-treat street that is held at the high school. And there's also one submitted by Tammy Barnes of the eighth grade career class for $200 from the Huron Area Federal Credit Union regarding to enhance their educational experience in that class. We then have open enrollment requests, number 2016 dash 13 dash 14 dash 15 dash 16 dash 17 and dash 18 for board approval.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
I'd second that.
There's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. I'll give one opportunity for anybody to remove anything from that agenda. Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote on the motion to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed say no. That motion carries. We'll now turn it over to Mr. Nebelsec to celebrate successes in the district.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I start, I do want to make a comment on the grant requests for funding that the student council at the high school is looking at. The changing landscape has greatly changed their ability in the past five years to fund the activities of the student council. They used to have predictable revenues of $500 a month from the different beverage machines, et cetera, and, and as all of that has changed with the regulations and what is allowed and is not allowed, their opportunity to have ongoing revenue in order to run student activities at the high school has gone to nearly zero. And so they're going to be exploring several options in order to have some type of funding mechanisms to continue the leadership opportunities that take place in the district. So that's just an FYI to a changing landscape. Want to congratulate Elizabeth Dixon for being on the 2016 Girls All ESD Soccer Team. Congratulations to Marissa Rubadu, our pre-three preschool handicapped teacher, on her marriage to Ian Kreckelberg, to Windstorm and Batakeen for being named to the 2016 Boys All ESD Soccer Team. Devanya Muntz for being awarded a $500 grant from Kristen Holm Lusk Foundation for the Math Nights. Thank you, many thank yous this week to the Huron firefighters, John Cofflin and Jared Salmons for bringing the ladder truck to the Washington 45 Center. The ladder truck was used to take pictures of the fourth and fifth graders, along with faculty and staff, as they connected hands around the school for Unity Day, which was celebrated on October 19. Thank you to Craig Lee for volunteering his time to bring his drone to take pictures of Unity Day activities at the Madison 23 Center. Thank you to the district counseling staff for organizing a school-wide recognition of National Unity Day, encouraging staff and students to be unified for kindness, acceptance, and inclusion. Thank you to Officer Skorheim for presenting on pedestrian traffic to third graders and Halloween safety to second graders at the Madison Center. Thank you to the Huron Fire Department for bringing the mobile classroom to present for fire safety to second graders in the Madison Center. And thank you to everyone who helped at the state cross-country meet. Huron is lucky to have such dedicated workers and employees. And I want to put a special thank you out to Lynch Snyder and Red Wilk as they donated their personal vehicles in order for us to take care of many, many senior citizens as well as accommodating those who had any kind of mobility issues and wanted to see their children or grandchildren. And so thank you to Mr. Snyder's and Mr. Wilk for their generosity there. That's my report.
Thank you. I wanted to add to the list of thank yous. I was contacted today by John Crochstrand, who is the Assistant Executive Director of the High School Activities Association. He was, he had sent out a thank you to the staff of the Huron School District regarding their participation in the state cross-country meet. And I wanted to read that here. He particularly has a lot of thanks for Mr. Roderick and Mr. Nebelsec for their participation. So just for the benefit of the board, he wanted to make sure the board was aware of this, and so I'm going to read it here for you. He said that, "I would like to just take a moment and second the previous email and especially commend Mr. Roderick on his continuous efforts to showcase Huron as a phenomenal host community. Every member of the South Dakota High School Activities Association executive staff certainly recognizes, appreciates, and remains impressed by all Mr. Roderick coordinates to make every event in Huron truly a showcase for students from all corners of our state. Of course, this is not just during our state finals and championship events, but also each of your regular season contests as well. Simply put, Terry's professionalism and service to your community are second to none. Additionally, I don't know too many communities that have a superintendent willing to volunteer his or her own time to help shuttle hundreds of parents, spectators, and fans from their vehicles to the course with the care and compassion that Mr. Nebelsec displays at each state cross-country event I have attended in your community. Mr. Nebelsec's efforts to show true servant leadership in assisting patrons from across the state and also representing your community and district are impressive and commendable to say the least. When you see either Mr. Roderick or Mr. Nebelsec, please be sure to thank them for another job well done. Sincerely, John Crochstrand." So I just want to make sure you're aware of that and the community is aware that we see a lot of kudos from the state regarding our hosting of state events.
I'd just like to comment, I don't like them really picking out a name or two. There's hundreds that work out there and I'm thankful for each one of them.
Thank you. That concludes our congratulations and thank yous. We'll now move on to reports to the board.
I think I'm on. Nope?
It's out, you're on.
There I am. Okay. I want to just thank Heather C. for getting on top of our building to take the pictures. We didn't have the fire department and we didn't have the drone, but we had Heather crawl up on top of the middle school building and take the picture for our Unity Day, so I didn't get that turned in, but we had some great pictures too and we appreciate that. This is always a fun time to come here and recognize Classified Employees of the Month, and we had six people that were nominated at the middle school and over 60 people received ballots to vote on that. And Ann Fenske was chosen for the second year in a row as our middle school classified employee of the month. I'm going to read from the two nominations that we received on Ann and why she was selected by her fellow colleagues. One of our nominations says, "I believe Ann deserves the recognition for countless hours of dedication that she puts into making sure the middle school office building runs smoothly. She's willing to drop whatever it is that she's doing to help someone in need. She has a breath of fresh air in the office, always having a smile on her face and a willingness to help, doesn't matter if you're a student, parent, teacher, custodian." The other nomination said, "Ann works very hard at completing her assigned tasks even when there's millions of little interruptions during the day. She's always on the go, but has the willingness to stop what she's doing, take care of a phone call from a parent, a student need, a staff member's question or concern. Her worth ethic is next to none and her personality, it makes her an asset to the middle school staff. She's dedicated and diligent, no matter what comes her way, and is ready to tackle any obstacle. Ann is usually laughing and smiling when she's working, which places all others she works with at ease. Her sense of humor is appreciated alongside her caring attitude. She instinctively, instinctively knows when to be caring, when to be tough, needs to know when to be a bit serious, laugh a little, or buckle down into a challenging task. She always handles every situation with patience and perseverance. Basically, what I'm trying to say is that Ann is a hard worker with a great attitude and aptitude for this position. We're lucky to have her working for us every day. Mrs. Williamson, myself, can't agree anymore with the two nominations and the selection that were made by our staff. Middle school classified employee of the month, Ann Fenske." Thank you. Thank you.
I need a picture. Mike, usually the paper takes a picture. If you want someone to take it and send it to him, you can. It'll be all right. Sure. Thank you.
Just come out or in here.
As long as you get it done, I don't care how you.
Let things move along. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a good report coming up.
Yes, our next report is a good news report from the Buchanan K-1 Center. We have a lot of people present for that, but we'll turn it over to the principal, Peggy Hines.
They've got so much good news, they need to date people.
It is on attendance, so here we go. First of all, Tracy Nelson and Amy Hofer, I need to do a shout out for them because they did get on Buchanan's roof and took our pictures. So this is our school improvement team and they will introduce themselves, and like I said, it is on attendance.
Oh, we need to turn that on. Okay, as Peggy mentioned, we'll all introduce ourselves this evening, so I will start. I'm Lacy Freiberger, and I teach kindergarten and first grade ESL at Buchanan. We're going to share a brief presentation with you that exemplifies some of what's important to the success of any and all students, and it starts with our staff and students at Buchanan Elementary. The first slide, okay? These are just two quotes that I'd like you to consider as we present tonight. These came from Governor Dugard. "Eighty percent of success is showing up. In turn, for students to be successful, they have to be in school. It doesn't matter if absences are excused or unexcused, consecutive or non-consecutive. Time out of the classroom is learning time lost." And that's just a little introduction to the rest of our presentation.
I'm Leah Jackson, and I teach kindergarten at Buchanan. As you can see in the picture, this is our attendance board that we have. When you first walk into Buchanan, it has the daily attendance percentage rate for kindergarten and first grade, so it's kind of fun to see which grade is more in attendance, so then the kids kind of recognize that, hey, I do need to be in school today. I have an impact on my kindergarten classmates, or I have an impact on my first grade classmates. So it's going to keep students and parents aware of where attendance rate is every single
So when, this summer, when our school improvement team started looking at ways to bring attendance to the forefront and a focus for us as a priority, we watched a video on a school from, I think it was Grand Rapids, Wisconsin, if I'm correct, and they do strive for less than five. And so we started thinking of ways that we could bring that into our building with things, and then to tie it in with things that we're already doing. So Peggy, for six years, has been doing the attendance fairy. And the attendance fairy comes to every classroom at the end of every month, and the kids who have been in school each day for that month, or have perfect attendance for that month, get a prize or a treat or a reward, and it's different every month. In our building, it's pretty funny when they come to first grade, you know, and kindergarten, the fairy and the principal are two different people. And then they get to first grade, they figure it out. They're like, oh, that's the same person. So, but it's still really fun when she shows up, because you know, they don't really know. She just comes in on the last day. So to tie the attendance fairy into strive for less than five and to make it work with what we're doing, we, instead of, we talked about different ways to make it on the, you know, put it on the locker so everyone can see what everyone's doing and how their attendance is. And so we created a locker tag and says strive for less than five, but instead of putting something on the, on the kids' lockers where they would like take away at like one if they missed a day of school, every time the attendance fairy comes, we have nine circles up there for the nine months that we're in school. And if they get a treat from the attendance fairy, then they get a sticker for their locker too. And every child at Buchanan has the strive for less than five tag on their locker. And so we've had one full month of school, so we have one sticker up. And, but their goal, the kids, the kids know that their goal is to get as many stickers as they can for the whole month, or for the whole year, so for each month.
All right, I'm Chris Acorko, and I teach first grade. What, this is actually a picture of my classroom where it says perfect attendance and it has the tallies. Every day when we do a morning attendance, and if we're all there, we do a big woo-hoo and a cheer, and then the orange sign, it says 100% of our class is at school learning today. So all kindergarten and first grade classrooms have these signs, and then you post it, and so we do a little woo-hoo and we put it on the door and we get excited. And my class, so we made it one whole week, for five days, all of our kids were there. And so we ended up having a popcorn party at the end. Mrs. Hines came down and she celebrated and told the kids how proud she was of them, and so it was a pretty big deal. And it really got the kids excited to come to school and to be there, so we like to put a tally up every day. And then also with the orange signs, if we see them in Mrs. Spears's room or something, we'd walk by and, "Mrs. Spears's class, I see you're all here learning today. Good job." And so just giving those little praises here and there, it's kind of, it's kind of, just to see that around the class and around the school, it's been nice, so.
I'm Michelle Chase. I teach first grade, and in our lunchroom, we have created a graph with all the teachers across the bottom. And then every day that we have perfect attendance, we get to put up a little rectangle on our, above our name. And so for my class, that's been very good. They're very competitive. They're always one behind Mrs. Joyce's class, so on top of seeing how many days we've had perfect attendance, we're also practicing those graphing skills and how many more and how many less, so it's working really well.
Hi, I'm Karen Spears, and I teach first grade. And we have decided that it would be really good to have incentives for our students who did have perfect attendance. So we have a quarterly reward for our first grade students with perfect attendance, and we decided that the best economical way of rewarding this is that they get to spend some free time with Mrs. Hines. And so that is just a little way to show them that we really appreciate that they're at school every day. Another one is for semester rewards for parents, because sometimes it's just hard for parents to get to school, get them to school, and we want to show them that we're grateful and want to thank them that we decided as a team that we would have gas cards given to parents, and we would do two, one for first and one for kindergarten twice, once a semester. So there would be four gas cards given to parents as another incentive to get their child here on time.
I'm Lisa McCarty, I'm the instructional coach at Buchanan, and we are just starting a program called Kid Connections, is what we call it, and it is exactly that, where we want the adults in our school to make sure that we are making a connection with all the kids. So Mrs. Hines and I got together and we tallied up how many staff members we have, and then we asked the classroom teachers to nominate three students from each class, and then we divided them out, and most staff members have one child connected with them, but some staff members have more than one. And what they're going to do is, our goal is to meet with each child, or meet them in the hallway, whatever, just make a connection with them at least once a month throughout the year. So we're hoping that will help them feel connected and really want to be in school and know that there's other adults besides our classroom teacher that notice that they're
The shortest goes left. I'm April Allers, the kindergarten teacher at Buchanan School, or one of 11 kindergarten teachers. And we just want to end you.
And we just want to end you with a quote here to think about. "Kindergarten and first grade students who are chronically absent are much less likely to read at grade level by the end of third grade." Quote from Governor Dugard. Any questions or comments for us?
When you meet with your children for the connections, what goes on during those meetings, like in hall or?
It's just casual, like if you see them in the hall, or some, they wear birthday crowns a lot when they have their birthday, so just to maybe notice that it's their birthday or, each adult is assigned to one student, so hopefully they'll get to know and recognize if they're there that, you know, or if they've been absent for a few days, just to kind of help them know that they're being noticed and that we want them to be there.
You know, as a community person, a lot of times you wonder if everybody's on the same page. And what you've shown us this evening, entire staff at the K-1 Center are on board with this attendance, and I think it's, it's a great credit to each of you and those staff members that aren't with you tonight. When you look at that board that's in the cafeteria commons area with the little, the blocks, and, and I can imagine the competition at K-1 level. It's probably hard at times to channel that energy into the right, right area, but this, I, I'm very pleased with this report. Thank you very much.
Have you seen some effect from last year? Are you able to compare to last year, this year?
You know, that's a good question, and that's something we need to look at, because we have not compared, but we will look at that at the end of the quarter and see kind of where we're at.
I know this has been a topic we talked about at the last meeting too, and encouraging everybody and giving a word out to the community and the parents that attendance does matter, and so we're glad that you guys are doing that, and also that you're including parents in the program, so they also learn the importance of it.
I also like the program. I like what I see here, and we're seeing that throughout the school district, and I think as we focus on a goal and we start to measure each year, it'll have results.
Well, thank you very much for your report.
Thank you.
Okay, we now turn to the business manager's report.
This being the second meeting of the month, I didn't really have much tonight, but I could report on our, the elementary bond resolution that we passed a while back about trying to refinance the elementary bonds. That's been a long process, and on Friday, we jumped through another hoop with Health and Education Facility Authority and PIER, their board met and considered our bond issue for their approval so that we can gain their double A bond rating, and that was all successful and approved on Friday afternoon. So now I think we've jumped through all the hoops to be able to go out on the market. The problem is, the market has, came up since we passed that resolution, and I was supposed to get a report today from Doherty and Company about where we stand in the market, and I didn't hear anything yet today, so we will see. Otherwise, we will just stand ready in case rates become favorable to do this.
Any questions for our business manager?
So if rates aren't favorable and we stand ready, do we go through this process again when rates are favorable?
We've got a period of time, I'm not sure exactly what it is, but say, I think it's a year, something in the neighborhood of a year where we can stand. The resolution will stand and is ready to go.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. And we'll now turn to our superintendent's report.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to remind you again to reserve December 5th and December 12th. Those are Mondays in December from 11:30 until 1:00, so that we can find out after the election which, which, or if both meet the schedule of the three newly elected legislators to do our luncheon. This year, the luncheon will be at the Washington Center as we move it and offer an opportunity for them to tour a different one of our schools. On the off-election year, we schedule it quite early. On the election year, we need to wait till after the election before we know who to invite to that luncheon. For the benefit of the press, the entire board is there, so we are called into session, and the press is certainly welcome to attend when we meet with legislators over a luncheon at that time. Wanted to keep people informed of the work that we're doing to start to take a broad look at our after-school program. We're in the middle of a five-year grant. We're having a hard time staying within the budget compared to the amount of money, or compared to the expenses of meeting the needs of a growing population of, of young children who take advantage of the program. And we, on purpose, don't have a report tonight. What I simply wanted you to know is that we are going to be asking questions about what the program looks like and bringing together a delegation of principals and, and others who are directly involved in order to go through what the program looks like, ask if the handbook accurately reflects what we're doing, and start planning for the future. So you'll be hearing reports on that in the future. I've been checking with individual board members to find out if any are available for this Wednesday night. If a board member is available, we'll go over with the superintendent to the Associated School Board Regional Meeting in Miller on Wednesday night. Some years, we've been able to attend, and some years, we haven't, so I'm checking with each of you before and after the meeting on, on that meeting. We are in the process of looking at a couple of substitute teacher situations so that we've got appropriate support ready. I want to take this opportunity to wish Mr. Zach Campbell the very, very best, along with all of the other members of the 153rd who will be called into active duty in November. And of course, we have a huge send-off program in the arena on November 11th, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to wish him well and to allow the public to know that when a person goes to serve, their job will be here when they come back, so we'll be putting together the details on a substitution, a long-term substitute in that classroom. And then also, I'm looking at what are the best ways to facilitate administration at the high school during a short-term leave that is coming up in order to make sure we've got all of the support measures that we need in place in order to have a quality school day going on there. That is the extent of my report tonight, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any questions for the superintendent? Seeing none, we'll move on to old business. Of course, item of old business is a first reading on the conflict disclosure policy that was introduced at the last meeting. This is basically the recommended policy from the Associated School Boards, recommended policy AH, that puts into place a policy for us to follow that coincides with the state statute that was passed this last year regarding conflict disclosure. If there are any questions or discussion, if not, it'll sit over for a second reading and approval at the next meeting. Okay. Seeing no discussion, we'll move on then to a first reading on our procurement guide for federal awards. This is also introduced at the last meeting. This is also a first reading, so it would sit over for second reading and action at the next board meeting. Any questions or discussions on this? Seeing none, we'll then move on to new business. We have, the first item of new business is a coach bus bid submitted, and I'll ask Mr. Christopherson to comment on this.
Well, as you know, we had it in the budget for another used motor coach bus, our, we have, currently have two of these type of buses, and the second one is in need of retirement, so we have been watching for one that we thought would fit the bill, and then we wrote the specifications and advertised, and we sent the bid specifications to eight different bus dealers. I think through the process, we learned a few things about the bus business. One of them is that they can broker buses and not actually be the owner of the bus or have the bus on the lot, because we ran into a situation where two bidders had the same bus, and we're both trying to broker the same bus. And that kind of became mute in the end, because a bidder came through with another bus that was even a better, I think, all-around bus and deal. And Rex and Jared Beck, the mechanic from the transportation facility, traveled to Bloomington, Minnesota, and actually inspected the bus in person, so if you have any questions about what they found, Rex could speak to that better than I can. And the one, the one bid that was finally submitted was for $128,000 for a 2003 MCI bus that is very similar to our best bus that we currently own, except it's three years newer. Looks about the same, it's white in color, seats about the same, which is good for a mechanic, he's familiar with one we have, this one's a very similar bus. And then just for, since we don't have, I could tell you that the other 2003 MCI that we thought we were going to get a bid on was priced in the range of $130,000 to $159,000. This one's at $128,000. Three years ago, when we bought the similar bus from Las Vegas Bus Sales, we paid $105,000 for a bus about in the same condition, so. I would say out on the market right now that there's not an abundance of these kind of buses sitting around, or they would have been bidding them to us to move them.
Mr. Hader?
Couple of questions. It seems like the first one we got, this goes back a ways, back in the late 90s, early 2000 timeframe, we got through surplus property at a pretty reduced rate, low mileage. Is anything like that available through surplus property, or have we checked with them, federal surplus property?
Oh, well, I guess I didn't specifically check with them this time around, but we visit with surplus property all the time about buses and school buses, and we've never been able to find one that really fit the bill. We got our start there back when I was the first business manager, you know, about 16 years ago, we bought a 1984 Eagle from, that was an Air Force bus that we ran a few years and put a new engine in it and then ran it some more, and then we got a 1988 Eagle, and we ran them. The problem with them was that they don't make Eagle buses anymore, and the parts got so hard to get that we had to discontinue those, using those buses. Then we, might as well go through the whole history of these buses. We bought the Activity Bus, brand new, that wasn't quite a motor coach, but it's not a yellow bus either. It's got really nice activity seats in it, had an entertainment system in it, found for some sports, the storage wasn't quite meeting what we needed for football equipment and pole vault, things like that. And we're still using that bus to this day. It's a good, really good bus for what we use it for. And then we bought a 1990 used motor coach from a company that was just going out of business and looking to get rid of it. That is the one that's currently our second motor coach that's consuming a lot of oil right now, and we need to quit with that one. And then three years ago, we stepped up to a good motor coach, the 2000 MCI that you see with the Tiger decals on, and then this one's very similar to that.
That's my only concern, is if we could at least ask the question to see if they have one available. If they don't, they don't, you know, but if they do, then there might be an opportunity.
What kind of mileage is on this bus?
Better let Rex see what he found out.
This one we found when we got over there has had a new factory engine put in it, so it's only got about 230,000 miles on it. Our current MCI, our 2000 MCI, probably has closer to 850,000 miles on it, so I think this one should last us quite a long time. And they, when you get a factory overhaul or factory engine, it's, it's much better than just any, any off-the-street mechanic doing it and stuff. So, and there's no warranty, it's been a couple of years, it's got 200,000 miles on it, but I had looked and Jared listened to it, and Jared's very familiar with the engine. He thought it would be a very good engine, should last us a long time, so.
Thanks, Rex.
Rex, do you have any idea what the total mileage on the bus itself is?
Well, the bus itself would probably have closer to 859,000 or 1,000 miles. It was a tour bus, one of those big tour buses that goes around the country, but the guy that's, we're buying it from this company out of Bloomington, they've taken care of it since it was new, and he said it was serviced regularly, quite regularly, he took care of it. And then when it came time for the engine, he took it in and had it done at the factory, so. Yeah. Yeah, looks good, runs good.
Any other questions?
What do we have in the budget? Did, do we have a line item for this in this year's budget?
Yes, I think we had $240,000 line item.
Okay.
I would make a motion to accept the bid.
I'd second it.
A motion, a second to accept the bid from Transportation Advisors Company.
Just a question. Wrong way. If we do accept the bid, does that preclude us from checking with surplus property?
Well, if we accept the bid, we buy, we are committed to buy it. But we can still check with surplus property to see if they had another one.
Do we need another one, or?
I'm not sure about that, how we're sitting.
If we did, if we, if we got another one, it would be, I mean, there are times when we, when we could use another one, but it's not a lot. It's, it's just during the fall sports when we have all, when we have, what, eight of our, eight or nine of our varsity sports going in the fall, that's about the only time when we really could use a third one or an additional one. And I don't know how much it would probably get used. I mean, it would depend on the condition of it too, how far we could go with it, if it could go out to, to the west or not. That's the trouble. Some of those ones, you get a surplus, they're pretty well, they're pretty wore out sometimes and tired, so you really can't take them very far, but usually when they have something like that, they give us a call, or they'll, they'll say, hey, we got this bus, if you guys are looking for one. I haven't seen any on their website, haven't checked for probably two, three weeks, but normally if they have them, they'll call us right away, because they want to turn them over too. But I haven't seen any on their website, and they had a call this long for a while,
Kurt, when, when we hit, when we got 84 and 88, you know, that was like cutting edge for the here in school district. We were now in the coach bus business, transporting our students. And it got to the point where the costs were killing us, number one, but the bigger thing was, we couldn't trust those buses to drive to Mitchell and back, let alone to Sioux Falls, to Rapid City. And the breakdown on the road was horrendous. Parents, I was on the board at the time, in the wintertime, parents, I didn't get a lot of phone calls, except in the wintertime when they had kids riding on number 88, because they were, it was undependable. And then, because of our financial situation and the need for a bus, we bought the Activity Bus, and that didn't quite meet the full need, and then we went into the, to the coach, the two coaches we got now. So I think I was there for all, when was the first one bought, the 84?
Early 2000s.
I think I was there for all five of those purchases, and I will say that the last one we bought, while it had a lot of miles on it, it was a tour bus, and it was well-maintained. And it, it came to us looking good, and it had a good maintenance record. And so I think that is a plus over surplus property, because you have no clue how they've been maintained up to the point that they end up behind the chain-link fence down on Market Street. So I'd be real hesitant to even ask them if they had one, to be honest with you. So I'd be real hesitant to even ask them if they had one, to be honest with you.
And I can only recall the first one we got. And I don't know if we got one earlier than your tenure or not, but.
That was the first one. And then a few years later, they found us another one that was almost like it.
The first one we got had fairly low mileage, but I don't remember all the details.
As John said, they both did kind of prove to be unreliable on their own trips.
Okay.
And then the parts availability made it even more difficult when you were broke down away from home, because nobody could fix them.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, or, I guess we already have a motion and a second.
Correct.
Correct.
So any other questions or discussion? Seen none. We'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. We'll now move on to the driver's education analysis, and I'll ask Mr. Christoperson to also comment on this.
Well, this spreadsheet that you have in your board packet I put together, I don't bring this to you unless I think we see the need for a change. We try and hold our costs to our students down. I don't, I couldn't find the exact date we changed it, but it's been for sure back to 2009 that we've been charging $200 per student for the driver's ed fee in the summer. And over the years, we've had our ups and downs with $200. Sometimes we made a little bit of money, and sometimes we lost some money. But the last couple of years, we consistently are losing some money on the program, so that's why I brought it to you at this time. So for the summer of 2017, I would recommend the rate increase from 200 to 250, and that should, that should cover the program if it's similar numbers of students and instructors as it was this summer.
So you're looking for action to set the rate for driver's education at $250 per student?
Yes, I did, of course, check in with Mr. Radke, the high school principal, and have his agreement on this also.
So questions or action?
I'd make the motion to approve, so we can get into discussion.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to raise the cost of driver's education to $250 per student. It'll be up from $200 per student. Discussion.
You know, every time this has come up, the question's always asked, is this keeping kids from taking driver's ed? And I'm not sure, do we know that answer? But do we know if Mr. Radke, does a high school have parents step forward and say, we'd love to have our kids in driver's ed, but there's no way I can pay $200, $250 to have them? Does that ever come up?
I think that when you look at our dynamics, I'm sure that that is a, is a situation. I would just, I would go so far as to say that's a given.
Okay.
Okay? I think the, most parents make a financial decision based on what their insurance companies say their rates will be with the program and what their rates will be without the program, and then they make a financial decision as to which way get pencils for them before they make the financial investment, other than those who believe they want someone else to teach their child how to drive. But I, when, when you run the, the level of households we do, yeah, I think that it's a financial situation that I'm sure is very difficult for some families.
The only comment I got while I was researching all this was from one of the office workers at the high school, who said that we took all the students we could and still turned some away because of the, we only had so many instructors. I think they used four instructors.
The, I was gonna say, the dollars look like it balances out at, you know, the projected cost for students, 252, so I understand going to the 250. I just wondered if there wouldn't be any type of grant program, whether it be United Way or some other local match grant that might be able to help with something like that that'd be worth exploring. I know we, you know, we apply for grants, you know, frequently through those organizations, and whether that would be worthwhile to at least explore.
I guess I would just comment that I'll support the motion, too, because I think we do need to try and maintain parity on this, and driver's education is something that doesn't necessarily need to be supported by tax dollars. And so we provide it as a service, but it really probably should be self-funding.
It is accounted for in the enterprise fund, which is a self-funded account. And I would also add that the high school works with the parents and offers them payment plans. They start in January promoting driver's ed.
Correct.
And offering payment plans to help the families.
What's the age that they can actually take driver's ed in the summer?
Most of the candidates are eighth grade going into ninth or ninth grade going into tenth.
Thank you.
It's the vast majority of candidates.
Any other questions or discussion?
Just to make a note down there, it is, some of it, what you don't see, I think there is.
Mrs. Hinker, would you go to a microphone?
Just to make a note, when you talk about grants and agencies that help fund our driver's ed, we do have a business in Huron that provides for the interpreters during driver's ed, and they are there in the vehicles for countless hours every day. And that is not on the spreadsheet, because it's not an expense that the district has to provide for, because it's funded through an agency.
Do you know what percentage of the students are ESO?
No, I can't give you a percentage, but.
I'm just curious. But it's good that they're taking the class, and they feel comfortable doing that.
Yes.
I, I would venture that the percentage is somewhere below 25%. And the reason why I say that is because we have one instructor who has specialized the last three years in, in the ESO instruction of driver's ed, so they are not randomly placed. Mr. Frankenstein, who's a longtime retired educator that lives in our community, spent his career in Howard, but he, he has made it a, a personal passion to prepare and, and teach those kids, so they all run through his classroom rather than random through the four classrooms. Well, he's not going to have more than a fourth of the kids, and all of his kids are not ESL, so that's why I would say the percentages have to be, now I'm talking myself into less 20%, but certainly not more than 25%.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seen none. Proceed to vote on the motion to approve the cost per student for driver's ed at $250. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. And then our, oh, not quite our last item. Our next item is the amendment to the Special Education Comprehensive Plan. And I guess I'll ask Ms. Wielander to comment on this.
In July, the board approved the Special Education Comprehensive Plan, and we are adding a little additional to the truancy statement. We are adding what Officer Benjamin.
All right. In July, the board approved the SPED comprehensive plan, and we are adding a little bit to the truancy statements in there. We are adding what Officer Benjamin does for all students for truancy, not just SPED students. And so that's the additional portion of that statement.
Talking the last paragraph?
Nope. The last paragraph is just for SPED and IEP, IEP and 504 students. The first two come from Officer Benjamin.
Could you guide me through the process of what's currently happened as we get to each unexcused absence, because we're not talking illness, family emergency, et cetera?
Right.
I assume after one absence, being addressed with parents or?
Yes. The statement, the second paragraph talks about how administration meets with students and parents when possible to inform them of the consequences of truancy and discuss ideas to improve attendance. So that is done before we ever get to considering reporting them for truancy. So.
And what happens as we get to two, three, four?
It just goes on. He does not report until there's five days or 21 class periods at the high school.
So what are we trying to, or is this a whole new?
No, this is what he's always done.
And what's different from what?
I'm just adding it to my SPED comprehensive plan.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Okay, and then, okay, so if I understand right, then students in SPED would go through their IEP student team before it's referred to the state's attorney?
Yes. We'd have a team meeting to decide if the disability is a part of the reason why they're missing school or not, before we turn it.
And it should be an excused absence, though, shouldn't it?
Yeah.
It shouldn't even be, shouldn't even.
Well, you still have to determine if there's something else going on.
Right. I understand.
Yep, we'd have to meet before we would turn that over to the state's attorney.
And then what if you get past five?
That's a team decision for each kid.
Okay.
What's, where we're going with each kid, and if we need to do additional testing, or we need to make any different accommodation or modifications to their plan or anything to help them.
Okay. Thank you.
I would assume that in order to be excused, if the parent called to the school, then let them know the child was sick or something like that.
Yep.
That wouldn't be one of the five absences.
No. No. That would not be included.
Just unexcused, not showing up, no call.
Right. And the parent, no notification from any parent guardian or anybody of why they were gone.
So what you're seeking is approval of this amendment to the comprehensive plan, correct?
Yes.
So moved.
The motion, looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you. It's a motion and a second to approve this amendment. Any further discussion? Seen none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. Thank you very much. And then the last, we have a consideration and approval of some bills. I'm guessing this was placed at the end, because it includes the bus purchase?
Yes.
Okay.
And I have a correction to the list of bills.
Okay.
It's a short list, but the very first one, the check to Farmers and Merchants Bank for change for $10,000. We thought we needed that change for the upcoming volleyball tournament. We wanted to have the check written, because we host the State B volleyball tournament in mid-November. Turns out, we needed that change for the state cross-country meet, too, so we wrote a check out of the impress fund on Friday and went and got the change for the state cross-country meet that was held this weekend. So that check's already done. We're not approving that one tonight.
Okay, so the other bills, the bills we will be approving then are for Holiday and Express, for some travel, to Northwestern Energy for utilities, and Transportation Advisors Company for the bus that we approved tonight. Any further discussion? Make a motion to approve the bills? Who paying the bills?
Second.
Thank you. The motion and a second to approve those three bills that were, that I listed. Any further discussion? Seen none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. That is it for the business meeting. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second. Motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. We are adjourned.